I was gonna work on this. I didn't get it, so I'm kinda passing it off to all three of you instead of just passing it to Todd. Uh, I think it's a wise move. It needs to be looked into. Uh, Salenda, it loses depth every year because of silt runoff. Um, I think now's the time to do it, because it wasn't done when they built the new dam. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
When's the last time it was dredged?
It's never been dredged.
Wasn't it done back in the seventies?
Uh, I've never found-
Did they?
Okay.
What, Talon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause Bob Fisher had to poke a hole in my right brother.
Right.
And that was back in the seventies when they did that upper end.
Must've been before my time.
No, it'd been your time. Uh, you maybe didn't pay attention, but it was done.
And the other thing that I will mention to you that I heard throughout my campaign was, is there is a group of citizens out there that feels like there is a disconnect as far as the city and the county working together. Um, I don't know where that's coming from, that's just what I was told. Uh, you know dredging Lake Salenda as a joint venture might kinda ease that a little bit, but I, I think it would be a wise move and it'd be beneficial to the county. May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Back in, uh, I got on the East Washington Rural Water Board back in 2008 when Mayor David Bowers was on. This idea was, was floated back about 2010 or 11, I believe. At that time, which has been, you know, that's been several years ago, it was gonna cost about $20 million. And the big issue was they really didn't have any agreements with the adjoining landowners as to what to do with the silt. Now their plan was this huge machine that pumped the sludge, which is basically what the bottom, it just, it churns up the whole lake. And it pumps this sludge into, I don't know if any of you are familiar with, some of you farmers with silage bags, you see these big plastic bags? And it was to be pumped into the most convenient place, and we're talking about several acres, several acres that it would take up. And bottom line is, um, it would be nice, it was dredged, because it would be a lot cleaner and a lot more useful to everyone. Um, but it's not economically feasible was the problem. And this was, uh, back before we raised the, the water level of Lake John Hay, cause our main concern was having enough water for the county. In addition to that, to treat the water, if the water was better in Lake Salenda after it was dredged, it would cost a minimum of 10 million to get the treatment plant up and going, cause it's, it's old, you know, it, uh, it was probably put in there in the fifties. The, the lake, Lake Salenda was actually built in 1947. So from a silt, silting in aspect standpoint, it has far outlived its intended use, and that was mainly for flood control and recreation in fifty-plus years. So, um, aside from that, um, when you say partner with the city, um, and I don't know where all these rumors came from that, that we don't get along with the city, um, I know for a fact that, uh, we have a better rapport with the mayor of the city and the council members, um, than at any time in, in my lifetime, since I've been here in Washington County, but at times in the past, uh, the county and the city seemed to butt heads a little bit, but, uh, I don't, I don't know where that came from. That's, uh, that's just a, uh, false rumor started by someone who should learn to keep their mouth shut. Uh, anyway, um, I, I don't, I don't know where that came from, but anyway. Bottom line is the Lake Salenda dredging just costs too much money. And I appreciate your concern, it'd be a good idea, but, uh, and I don't know how it could be funded, but, uh, aside from that, uh, we certainly don't have the extra money from the county to, uh, you know, to be spending on such a project as that, um, so. And you know, and then like I said, you know, this, this was me just putting this out here hopefully to, to maybe stimulate some thought. Um, and, uh, you know, Todd, you and I have talked before, we, we need to do everything we can to move the county forward. Uh, if it's economically unfeasible, that's fine, you know, we'll, we'll shield it and go on to something else, but I wanted to bring it to you guys this morning. Uh, I had time and I appreciate you hearing me out.
Yeah, I think, I think the mayor who had been on the council, I believe he was on the council at that time, he, he could certainly tell you a lot more about the dredging than what I can as far as the, the dirty details, because he was on the council at the time that they were considering this, so you might want to have a conversation with him about it.
All right.
Mr. President?
We do have a good rapport with, with the city, where we're in good shape with the mayor and everybody, and all the council, and the commissioners along the way. And, uh, as Todd said, there's no money there.
You're never reading on them right now?
Yeah.
I see them, the tables and stuff standing up, counties working together.
Yeah.
Fiber rock picking and all facets of the-
And you know, it's like Todd said, Lord knows where that rumor came from. I had heard that from three or four people when I was campaigning, so. Well, with the guys, I won't take up any more time, and again, I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you.
Bye. Katie?
I'm not gonna sit down, I'm gonna yield the floor to Chad Johnson and David Cole. They're actual in Hardinburg City Limits, and they have some questions for you about reincorporation.
Paul?
Up there?
Yeah.
Sitting those chairs there. Up to the speaker.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. My name is David Cole. Uh, we have some concerns and some issues that we wanted to bring up. Uh, I know that the last couple of weeks I've been at, uh, there's been questions regarding Hardinburg being incorporated. Uh, did the commissioners, do you all have any idea of what the requirements are, or who would need to go to the state level or have it done, or is it something we can bring to you all?
There's a whole statutory process, you have to, you guess, the county can't really give you guys legal advice, but there's-
Right, and so, let me, some part questions is what do we do? Um, does the county provide any kind of access to attorneys or anything for us? I mean-
Nothing on the ground.
So what you're saying is effectively, there is no path forward to reincorporate, because as citizens without any authority of our own, we don't have no access to attorneys, we don't, and you're not gonna help us, so basically it's dead in the law.
I encourage you to read the statutes. I, I can't help you.
Well, the different ones of us in the community, not just ones that live in Hardinburg, it was a township, but other people outside who live in the same area code, have looked into the statutes, and currently there is no way with a lot of the stipulations that we can ever be incorporated for the size of the town, the number of taxpayers, or the requirements as far as basic utilities, like having a marshal, or sewers, or things like that. There's just not enough area there and there aren't enough taxpayers to do it. So it's an issue that keeps being brought up over and over again, and how not as it being our thing to deal with, but there's no way for us to deal with it if we don't have access to that information. As far as the state level goes, yeah, we could go to the state level, but without having the town resurfaced, without, without having the budget set for a bigger tax base for more people being included, or just no way.
Yeah, I, I know, you know, some attorneys in town have a $125 consultation fee. I don't know if that's something that you could get some citizens to come up with $125 to sit down with an attorney and have a consultation, they can, they could probably give you more.
If you want something free, I would suggest you call, uh, not Steve, I'm sorry, Jay Davidson, you know, he was very instrumental in trying to get something resolved with this, and he, he's been through all the hoops, and he knows the legal requirements, and, and he's your state representative, and he would not charge you, so, um, he can, he can tell you exactly what you need to do in the future. I, I thought that was all pretty much spelled out at one time, but-
He, he did. Said steps that they had to make to start this incorporation of town again.
Yeah, he did, but he didn't tell us as far as where do we start and what office we need to contact to get it initiated.
But he could tell you.
As Chad had asked me multiple times, do we start with having ordinances written up and having the charter written up? And if so, is it something a lawyer has to do, or is it something we take to the state level that we wrote up as citizens, or what? And there's no-
But he ran it, he didn't know that.
Yeah, he didn't know.
And when I started getting to those kind of details, he didn't know, so that's not- Would, now you guys acted like you wanted us to reincorporate, or you would be fine with us reincorporating. He, he was fine with dissolving the thing so it could be reincorporated. Everybody's fine with reincorporation, but there's no path forward. I'm just telling you.
Well, I guess first thing you need to find out is, like you mentioned, do you meet the minimum requirements to be a town? That's the first thing you need to ask.
And we know we don't. According to the Indiana State website, as far as the laws and ordinances go, setting aside the charter, that we just don't have the infrastructure there or the tax base. And places like Hamletburg that haven't been incorporated, there's a lot smaller tax bases as far as the footprint goes and the number of people that pay taxes in the town. There's a lot higher tax in Hamletburg than there is in Hardinburg, but there's no way that even Hamletburg would meet that now if it was unincorporated and had to go through this process. The way that the state has it set up there is just, there's almost no town that's set as an area code or a town that's already surveyed as such, that would meet those requirements. Even Salem doesn't have a lot of the things that would require, that would require in order to be a town under Indiana State law. But when we were talking to Jay Davidson, and had meetings with him before you all was off the town, or signed the paperwork, he was off the town, he told us that it was one of two choices, either the county attorney had to do it, or it had to go to the state level, and he didn't want the state level involved, because more offices being involved, that more complications are gonna take longer. Well, if the county attorney or the state's attorney had to do it, we never understood how you all were the ones that made the decision and signed the offer to dissolve the town in Hardinburg. What we're doing right now is basically trying to figure out before January 1st, did you all set aside Hardinburg money for Hardinburg issues, what's gonna be taken care of in Hardinburg once January 1st comes? And if we can't find out what our new ordinances are gonna be, where our tax money's going and all that stuff, then the path forward is corporate, so that we know where our money's going and what can be done to improve Hardinburg.
What I have to say right now, without talking to Jay Davidson, the way he explained it to us, you had to January 1st to, to submit for reincorporation. And... I'm, uh, let me think. Cause what Jay said, basically, the financials, we put the remaining money into a separate account, which is marked for Hardinburg till the end of the year. And at that point, then the county will be picking up Hardinburg if you don't, if it isn't reinstated, as an incorporated town. And at that point, you'll be the same as all the other towns, Hardinburg, where I live at, uh, we have to pretty well defend for ourselves when it comes to that. As far as law enforcement, you count on the county sheriff. As far as the highway, uh, I mean, we get what we get when they get there. Incorporated towns like Pecan have their own truck for delivering sand, which does help the county out sometimes on layer of hill and snow. And then the county reverses and goes back and helps them to get everybody moving again. But as far as any, any of the county, as far as additional benefits, I'd say, street lights, no, there's nothing in setting anything about the streetlights.
I've got something to say about that. Go ahead. That was, that money, everybody agrees, that money that you kept set aside, that was money that was taxation without representation, right? Okay. But we can all agree it's, it was taxation, it was money from that county, from the town citizens. As citizens of the town, as, as property owners of the town, that was our money. So after January 1st, if, if you're not, if you, the town isn't gonna be incorporated, at the very minimum, that money should be set aside in some kind of account that is used to pay street lights or something else for the town till the money runs out. It should not go to be dispersed throughout the county.
That's a statement I would have to have you take up with the state, because it's state policy. All we're doing is following directions by the state, what we have to do. All the stuff we've done so far to do, it's been at the county expense. We're not touching any of your money, except set aside, who was thinking you was gonna reincorporate, hoping you'd reincorporate, and go from that, and the money to be put back. That's the way I understood it. Now you're coming up wanting legal answers from three people who don't know.
Okay.
And we, all we can do is abide by what the state has told us. Number one, we had to go down and confiscate all the files, we had to set up everything. Highway department, we've been down, we've looked into the streets and what have you. The fire departments, we've talked to them. Baseball diamond, the, uh, what's the other one?
Senior citizen building.
Baseball diamond.
The senior building.
The seniors, the community center. And, but again, all we're doing is going to district, but what we have to do. And Hardinburg, I don't know what happened where, who I didn't get incorporated, but wasn't incorporated, uh, it puts everybody in a mess.
Well, I know, and, and for instance, the, the whole idea that you're just following the state in, in, in an area that has no precedent in the state, I, I would say would be kind of an ambiguous thing that you're saying, because, yeah, you're following the state in some areas, but the, the state has never had a situation, at least from what David, Davidson said, never had a situation where they've unincorporated the town because it wasn't legit. So the idea of taking the money and then dumping it into the county kitty after so many months, i- is, there is no precedent, so the state wouldn't be telling you to do that, I don't think. I mean, the whole idea, that, that, that money is the county, is the town's, and I think the town, it should be used in the town. If at the very least, there's no law against it, at the very least on an ethical level, if you, if you would, as commissioners would decide to do this, spend it in some way on the, on the town. If we can't get reincorporated, which looks like there's no path forward, if we can't get reincorporated, at the very least, the money that, that belongs to the town should stay in the town. I, I think that would just be self-evident.
Excuse me, Kara isn't the money, hasn't it been set aside for Hardinburg? Okay, there is, there's a separate fund.
But he said that that would be dissolved after the first year.
Depends on the, on the future. I guess my question to you gentlemen, what, what are your needs right now? Is there some, some specific concern that we can help you with right now?
Okay, right now, I think you've answered the question. We wanted to know if there was any help from you all as far as getting incorporated. That would be the-
That's not up to us.
Can the-
Right.
Can the funds be used for an attorney for the town? If it's from the citizens of the town, and you have citizens from the town, why, like, I thought they were supposed to get help with the reincorporation process.
I would think those funds could be used for, for an attorney to get reincorporated.
Well, if it was any expenses.
That's a question-
If the town had any expenses, that money could be taken out of that account, couldn't it? Out, right, outstanding the expenses.
Yeah.
Let's check my state board accounts, and I'm out.
Aren't the funds supposed to be held for two years separately from the previous meetings? I thought it was supposed to be two years, that Hardinburg fund was supposed to be separate.
Do what?
There is a statute. I don't know if it's one year or two years, but I-
Okay, so it's not January 1st?
No. No, funds have to be, well, for a year, a year or two.
No.
That helps. Okay, well, that, that's my question. As I said, that's one of the questions we'd asked Jay Davidson about, as far as the attorney goes, and a lot of the questions we asked, and he took us around in circles and led us back to the same thing that you said about the state level. But he never pointed us in a direction, it never gave us a straight answer as far as if we have expenses to people breaking down, or survey, or anything else, can we use town money that was already budgeted for Hardinburg by the state? And never had an answer for it. He said he'd get back to it, but he kind of disappeared from everything once, after reincorporation.
Has the town never had a legal representation?
As far as we know, when Jay Davidson, his counselor, as a town council, they had a lawyer on their hand, because they used it to fight Carl, uh, I've got the last name for you. Maybe, over the property for a barricade road. They had gone to court with him for all, for five years.
Have you talked to him?
Carl?
No, no.
Attorney? No, the attorney, we have no idea. I mean, we know that they paid him, because myself and my wife were at a lot of the town meetings, where they approved their expenses, and they had checks that they had to approve in order to pay that lawyer. As far as that goes, I've tracked down, contacted the guy twice, and he's never been in the office, my God. So we have no idea, and they won't tell us anything anyway, because we weren't the one to contract Davidson, his counselor. So it's a, kinda like a medical record situation, where if you're not the one from the file, he won't give you any information. So, we've been trying to do this based off of what we know in the ordinances and the stipulations that the state has set aside, is what we have to have. But if we can't get incorporated, we wanna know that things are still gonna be taken care of. As far as the street lights though, as I told Katie earlier last meeting, the street lights, the regular 150 are a safety issue. I can understand those being paid for by the state or the county or whoever. The ones that are further off of 150, if people had the light start off by the county, they can adopt a street light. It's 15 bucks a month. I mean, I have no problem paying the streetlight off for her, that's only 150, 50 dollars a month, and I'm sure a lot of other people would for safety reasons. But if we're paying taxes, we should have to do that, because our money is going to Washington County, therefore Washington County aren't gonna be taking care of those lights that are there, in my opinion. Now as far as the other issues I had, uh, one of them was that, and I don't like breaking up the ball fields or anything that has to do with that. The girl that runs the ball field and has all that stuff, Melinda Jagger, she has put like, uh, fixtures on all of the utility poles in Hardinburg. Now when she did this, she managed to rip down some of the fiber rock table last year as soon as we had internet putting, it was knocked down by a semi truck the very next day, because they grabbed the auto and released the tension plates on it. They re-put flags up. I've talked to utility companies, and she has not requested permission or gotten permission from them, and as far as I know, that's a prosecutable offense, to put flag, assign anything else on the utility pole. I don't know if it is in Indiana, but I know years ago when my mother had yard sales stuff, if she hung a yard sale sign on the utility pole, she was told she could be prosecuted for that. So I'd like to know if there's anything I can do to order to get that stopped, without her having permission to do that. I don't mind her selling those flags and using it as fundraiser, but she needs to ask permission before she goes over people's property and possibly some injuries or liability losses. Utility companies have a right of way she does.
I agree with the legal part of it, but that should be the utility company's job.
Have you spoken to her about this?
No, I've not, I've lived in it at all. I try to stay out of anything regarding her and the dual leave involved, because I don't have kids, I'm a golf fan.
When we had our meeting to disband the town, I believe it was my son, or maybe probably all three of us said, first and foremost, you people, no matter what happens, the outcome, whether you incorporate or don't incorporate, first thing you have to do is try to get along. And you said you hadn't spoken to her. But you're here talking about it.
I brought it up at a town council meeting before the town was disbanded, while she was there, and she had plenty of opportunity to rebut it, she never said the same.
You guys are too close. You're too much neighbors not to just walk down the street and have a conversation and try to get along instead of airing your dirty lawn for a year, in my opinion. You need to get along.
Well, I brought it up as an issue you all, since it's gonna be your issue as far as the county.
But it's not gonna be our issue. We don't have control of the utility poles or anything.
I worry that.
Okay, but it's allowed to be our issue.
When it comes to her raising money and the town and using town property as a right of way to do something, if she owns somebody's property, it gets hurt, or somebody else is working for her, gets hurt, it's a liability issue for the citizens, which will come back to the town, because the town is the one who takes care of 150, and it's the right of way 150. Technically, it would be your all's issue, because it's in your all's right of way. Unless you wanna go and say it's the state level back.
I think that would be the state. That would, that would be the state property, uh, like the county. We own all the bridges in the county. We own even the ones in Salem. Uh, we own the bridge in Frederickburg, uh, the bridge. Am I now right on that, Rick?
Yeah.
But as far as the highway going over the bridge to and from, we don't own that, that's state. As far as the light pole and the flags, um... I realize it's a touchy situation for a new thing going on, and nobody knows what's going on.
And that's the same situation with all of this, since there's no precedent for any of it.
And that's, that's what it is, and that's like I said, we've been trying to do, we are, Steve Anderson come up, we went back, all of your boxes are back there, we went back there, he come up, went through it. The state is gonna do an audit someplace after the first year, but no more at that point. Uh, but as far as clear answers on that part, besides going against what Jay said, and he's further up the ladder than us, and with what he gave direction on doing, uh, but I think he's going out of office, so...
And that was the issue we brought it up before the end of the year, because he told us at the very first meeting he had, Senator Baker, that he wasn't running for reelection. So anything that was done as far as unincorporating, he wanted done before he left office. And then as far as reincorporation, I think that's why he said the deadline for January 1st, because he's out of office at the-
By the end of the year, then he's done. And it was supposed to be simple, but it hadn't been simple yet.
And that's the problem, is he started this and then kind of disappeared in the middle whenever it became to reincorporate or do an ice incorporation.
So, let me get, let, if, I think we've got most of our answers, let me get this straight. You guys really have no way of offering us any help for, for even laying out a, um, an outline of, of what needs to be done to reincorporate, so we need to go somewhere else for that, most likely to an attorney? Uh, and as far as the funds, the funds, we don't need to be worrying about the funds disappearing after January 1st, they're gonna be there for a year or two at least. And, um, you will get back with us, at what time will you get back with us on whether we can use the funds for an attorney?
I've tried to get back to state board accounts. And I've emailed her, so-
Okay.
It may be a day or two.
Okay, and who will you contact?
Who you want us to contact? You?
Can you contact me?
Yes.
Uh, you want my email address?
You, just write it down.
I'll just give you my number, it's easier, 812-569-1286. Chad Johnson.
It's been a chore so far, just rounding up all the papers down there. Nobody knew where anything was at.
Well, the other issue you're gonna have is I know Davidson had three pounds on his docket as what he wanted to start unincorporated or dissolving by the time he left office, and he was using Hardinburg as the starting point to set his precedent, is what he could do, and who he had to go through to. He knows that his patria is the boss of me, that it wasn't just Hardinburg, so...
It's been a challenge so far. It was supposed to be simple when we were told.
Uh, they, they, yeah, things supposed to be simple, then they go here.
But let, let, let Kara- They'll let, let, let Cal find out what she can from about the attorney. In question, has any of you talked to any of the previous board members about who they use?
I can try to find out.
Yeah, well, yeah, Dave would tell us. That's not a problem. Yeah.
Tucker? Was it?
I don't know.
Matter of fact, yeah. Dave gave me access to some of the, yeah, some of that employee already. So, I mean, I think, I think we're good with knowing who. It's just the attorney client privilege saying him now. His pre, this attorney, his previous client is not dissolved and isn't there, theoretically dead. So now what, 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 we won't have access to anything previous, but whether he'll work with us or not and consider us legit, uh, representation of the town, I don't know. I don't know how that will be, but I guess.
Well, that's what I would suggest to start with, I dare, and see what you find out from him because he's worked with the town and knows the town and the situation, find out, be out.
Yeah. Now, I did have a few questions. Talk about it. As far as the property bills and the books and the records and everything that you all got, when Carl Nettiger went through all that, uh, fighting the town and ended up giving up part of his property on Bearcat Road, that was done last year or before when it was finalized. If the town had never lived in the town, how do they not have to regard that property as?
I don't know.
I have no idea what the specific facts are.
I'd have to check into that.
I think it's something that we checked into as far as all the four of the properties that the town had in their name is how they acquired them, whether or not they were, or need to be referred to the actual owners of the property.
I know we had to get everything surveyed, so we knew if it was coming back, we could give it to you in clarity, uh, if you reincorporate it. But as of right now, we're still holding pattern with the surveyor and all that. So, uh.
Is, are you guys doing anything with any of the properties?
With what?
Are you doing anything currently with any of the properties? Maintaining, cleaning up? Somebody said you were cleaning up.
We did send the county truck down there. They wanted to liquidate the stuff in the, in the main building there. And we sent the county truck down to haul all the trash away for you.
Okay. In the main building there?
Yeah.
Whether or not in the, uh, yeah.
No, and the fire department's, they're pretty well maintained. Uh, there are trucks down there in that, on the back street and then a truck on the main part. And water line, I think crosses the, up where the firehouse is at. It went across their property down to the baseball diamond. I do know that. They did have a leak on it, but I don't think it's a major leak. That's what I've been told, but everything's subject to change.
Since you brought it up, I want to ask a question for the little lady that runs the senior center. Has any decision been made as to what they're going to do as far as them getting the senior center?
Our plan is as soon as we get it serviced, plan is right now to give the senior citizens the building. And, but we got to have a clarity before we do it. And if she is a 501(c)(3), then we can give it to her. But she wasn't a 501(c)(3), so that's what we're in the holding pattern on that part.
They're, they're, they're getting their articles of incorporation done.
To what?
They have, they're getting their articles of incorporation done. They're like finalizing the process.
But, I mean, it's in the process, right?
It is.
But the last I knew, she hadn't got it yet. But as soon as she gets it, that building will be hers.
I should go get her and then two, three weeks ago, I would hold up, you get somebody to write a 501(c)(3), so that they could receive it.
Yeah, we've been helping with.
Yeah, and that's the deal with the ball field because I don't, like I said, I don't care for it. Is that going to Melinda and her group for the dual leave? Because we were hoping since they're the ones that took care of it, that they would be the ones to end up with.
No, that stays in the town. At this point, that's probably all we need to say till we get everything clear so that you'll come back and say, I told you this and I didn't know. There's been enough confusion already.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Why don't we wait on him open bids? Can I call, uh, Zach up there? Zach? What, what are you sleeping on? Lori, come in, I want to. Hurry, Zach.
All right. The workers comp there on the first page, uh, payable is up, uh, for this coming year. Uh, the renewal premium actually went down, so it's a, it's a plus there. Uh, it'll be 108,519 for this coming year. Loss ratio is great, um, 3%. So let's, uh, let's keep that going.
You're on the roll, keep going.
What's that?
You're on the roll, keep going.
Yeah.
In a positive way.
Positive, uh, tracks and that, maybe. Commercial insurance, uh, you guys have been with Liberty Mutual, uh, for, since 2020. The three-year loss ratio is 56% and then the five-year loss ratio is 66%. Uh, as you can see, we do have a pretty hefty increase this year. Uh, the largest single line percentage increase comes in the bond liability. Uh, this is a very stretched line in the government municipalities, uh, just due to all the claims that kind of arise out of that, uh, situation. As he said, there's increased litigation in friendly governments that are occurring, which makes that a very difficult line. Ability values, obviously, uh, completion, uh, abilities keep on increasing on rebuild costs. We did update those this previous year to catch up. Uh, they did add a, a little bit more there, 5% on top of the property. There is one, um, change that can occur that will save about $10,000 on the, on the price of the commercial insurance. The, uh, property line, it's like buildings, if we would increase that deductible from a thousand to 5,000, and that's a line that doesn't see, again, uh, too much action. Um, if you would do that from a thousand to 5,000 on the deductible, that would save you right there at $10,000. We go from 83, 690 to 7, 73, 942. I've looked, uh, for alternative quotes, obviously, again, have the hefty increases like that. Uh, so I sent it out to two brokers, uh, that sent it out to several areas. Unfortunately, uh, the loss ratio, high levels of decline of quotes, uh, due to the loss ratio of not meeting their, uh, bankers. Vernon and Flowers, uh, due to the continued loss activity, they weren't interested as well. And then the last one there, Trappers, again, lost history. And, uh, they did mention, uh, they do have up-to-date jail inspection. That's, uh, what we add is two years old. Uh, I know I spoke to Sheriff Miller, he is finalizing that, uh, but, uh, just didn't get it in time, didn't take a look. But they also mentioned, if you're looking for bringing savings, looking at it. And then at the third page, kind of just gives you an idea of like the claim's history. Uh, back to 2020, actually go back to, uh, past performances when we were with HCC. In 2019, you had 21 claims and total incurred loss of 440,001.178. That was a tough, tough year. Uh, the three past years, 2020, uh, one of the key claims there was the ambulance, uh, that was hit by, they weren't at fault, uh, but with the policy that you guys have, you have to place a cost on that.
All right.
They did subjugate against that driver, uh, Liberty Mutual did, and got the 26,000, which leads me to believe that it was just, uh, state minimum coverage.
Yep.
That was 136,000 paid. There's two GL claims still open for 2020. On 2021, uh, one of the bigger ones there was the snow cloud truck, it was, uh, I believe a brand new truck, uh, that caught fire, uh, while it was falling in snow. We did recover some, uh, five recovery of 34,087. And then this year, this year, um, I don't even want to say it, but, uh, there's three open GL claims, uh, that are over at the county jail detention center and, uh, two auto claims that are open. But right now, total incurred, um, is 37,0694. So obviously that depends on how those go, uh, to figure out how 2022's going to end
Can we make any discussion?
I don't think I can, but. Yeah, 5,000 property deductible. I mean, it's going to drop the premium, $10,000. My opinion, you have a brain or switch to that.
Make a motion.
No, make a motion to that effect.
Don't you have anything? We're going to pay it one way or the other, so I agree with that on seconded. So Rick's made a motion to move from 1,000 to 5,000 deductible?
Yep.
And, oh, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. So going to change that.
There's like the, uh, the health insurance went, and then this came up. So one hand to the other. But, uh, yeah. Um, once through that, this is just off stab this, um, once that 2019 comes off, I mean, you got another year with that on there on five-year loss ratio, things will work out.
When do you need that jail report turned in?
What's that?
When do you need that jail report turned in?
He, I think, uh, what he just had to do is review it and sign it.
I think it's done by the state.
The state, the state does it.
They'll look for another year.
I think he said he had to sign off on something, um, before I could, uh, get it.
But I mean, when do you have to have it to make a bid?
Yeah, uh, you're looking, uh, right around 60, at least 60 days out before 1/1.
So do you have it by, by June?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's plenty of time. Plenty of time.
Okay.
Early fall wouldn't even.
Okay.
So.
We'll make sure we get it next year.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else? Uh, thank you, Zach.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
How would it be?
All right. First, uh, first bid that we are opening is from St. Regis Culver Inc., I really appreciate the opportunity to bid your county, however, however, due to past steel market conditions and no guidance from the mills for future steel costs, we can no longer extend pricing firm for a year. So there's no bid from St. Regis. Sorry, the mysteries. The next, uh, bid is from Robertson Crush Stone in Milltown, Indiana. And what'd you say, Rick? Uh, let's see, number eights is $12 and it looks like 30 cents. $12 and 30 cents for number eights. Number 53s? See number 53. Yeah, there's $11 and 20 cents. I'm sorry. $11 and 20 cents. Hourly rate for trucking for delivery is $8.80 per ton delivered to Washington County Highway The next bid is from Rogers Group Inc., Billington, Indiana. Number eight is $14.50 per ton. And number 53 is $9.50 per ton.
And who was that again, sir?
Rogers?
Rogers. All right. Thank you.
Let's put transfer gas. I'm going to save that for the gas. We got some other gas bids. We got some other gas bids. All right, I think we'll continue with the stone. The next bid is from Irving Materials in Brownstown. Yeah, that's, looks like the only thing they bid on was sand and gra, uh, sand. Uh, $10 per ton. Yeah.
Rick, that's $50 over there.
There another one there? There another one there?
And the next bid is I am Irving Materials or IMI Corden. Number eight, $12.70 per ton. And number 53, $10.95 per ton. You want the hot mix? Uh, hot mix, uh, $85 per ton, is that right, per ton? Base binder. Industry button is off, okay. So the hot mix is $85. And that is base slash binder. And the hot mix surface is $90.
And it's also all IMI Corden.
Yep. So hot mix base binder is 85, hot mix surface is 90. Coal patch, uh, they did not submit a bid, no bid. Next bid is IMI Sellersburg. Number eight, stone, $14.85 per ton. Number 53 stone is $10.70 per ton. And they are the exact same as the previous IMI bid for hot mix base and hot mix surface. So hot mix base was 85, hot mix surface was 90, and they did not submit a bid for coal patch. Next bid is Hanson Aggregates, uh, Scottsburg. Number eight is $17, I'm sorry, $13.70 per ton. $13.70. And 53 is $11.55. $11.55. Next bid is Cave Queries in Paoli. Uh, hold on, now the letter. It says Paoli, the bid says Jasper.
That's their home office.
Okay. Jasper is?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the one from Paoli.
Right.
Uh, number eight, stone. $9.50 per ton. Yeah, 53, there is a 53, 53 is $7.15 per ton. Uh, loaded onto county trucks, FOB cow car. What, that half mile east of Paoli on 150? Yeah, I'm not sure what. I guess that doesn't mean anything. If they just load that, it means they're loading it, they're delivering it. Yes. And, let's see. Uh, number eight surface on their hot mix. $81 per ton. Number eight binder, $78 per ton. Pretty much meaningless.
Mick Riddick. As Kay always said, uh, black hole.
Next bid is Davis Crushed Stone, DePaul, Indiana. There's no bid on number eight. Uh, number 53, $7.50 per ton. Yes, and number nine is $9.50 per ton. Yes, $7.50 per ton for 53s.
And nine is what?
Nine, or $9.50 per ton. Hourly rate for trucking for delivery of stone is $95 per hour. We are not currently enrolled in the indah program. Those are pending. And stone, these are fuel statements. This is Sybilcon. Yeah, these are the ones that give a little white coat because there's. Yep. Okay. Yeah, there's probably hundreds of prices listed here by, for the culverts, I'm sorry, for corrugated steel pipe. Different sizes and different gauges. Um, so if anybody's willing to take the pro, take a look at this, stolen for public record, or if there's anything, any particular size or gauge anyone would like to know, I'm happy to read it. Yeah, this is from E, the E, the letter E, the number three, Bridge. B R N, D G E, E3 Bridge in Bedford. And again, I believe this is, yeah, this is also for, uh, pipes and culverts. And much like Sybilcon, there's hundreds of different sizes and the prices vary based on those. Again, it's open for public record, if there's anyone, any particular one, any particular size or gauge anyone would like me to read, I'm happy to do that. Top secret. All right, we'll do fuel next. All right, so the first bid is from Riley Oil Company in Paoli. Um, tanker price delivered for number two undyed U L S D fuel. $3.351. And unleaded gasoline, 89 octane, tanker price delivered, 2.568. Again, 2.568.
The front one would have been diesel.
I think that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
3.351, 3.351 for diesel. Oh, that's just undeliverable, that's what, that's our notice. Okay, so Heritage Petroleum did not claim the mail, but we sent the notice, we sent the. The next bid is from Premier Ag. Uh, diesel number one, $4, uh, 4.4, 4.7715. And diesel number one, 4.7715. Diesel number two, 4.7702. The gasoline, 87 regular, 3.2764. Pricing subject to change with market. The next bid is from Petroleum Traders Corp. In Port Wayne. 87 octane unleaded, 2.0021. Again, 2.0021. Looks like, uh, diesel number one, red dyed, 4.6997. And diesel number two, red dyed, 3.0938. 3.0938. The first asphalt bid is from Mac Construction. Number four, high-performance cold mix, one hundred and forty dollars per ton. So yeah, Mac Construction, number four, high-performance cold mix, one hundred and forty dollars per ton.
Good. Why is it high-performance cold mix?
A little better than that.
Fresh fire too.
The next bid is also from Mac. This is for number five, furnished, I'm sorry, material furnished, HMA base, forty-seven per ton, forty-seven dollars per ton. Intermediate, fifty-six dollars per ton, and surface is sixty dollars per ton. I'll read that again. Base is forty-seven dollars per ton, intermediate is fifty-six dollars per ton, and surface is sixty dollars per ton. The last bid is Temple and Temple. Let's see, we've got oil. The high-performance cold mix is a hundred and ten dollars per ton. High-performance cold mix, a hundred and ten dollars per ton. Hot mix surface, sixty-six dollars and seventy cents per ton, six-six point seven zero. Hot mix binder, sixty-four dollars and seventy cents per ton, sixty-four point seventy.
First off, it's been a week or so, but there was a fairly severe accident on Bill Miller Road, a hit-on collision, and I've received a lot of calls requesting that the speedline be changed on that road. So I'd like to make the recommendation that we change a one-mile stretch of Bill Miller Road to a thirty mile per hour zone, beginning at Clear River Church Road, and continuing one mile east.
You have full signs on that section, Ed.
Say thirty mile per hour.
Bridge made a motion. Second. Second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Next up, I have a road inventory correction. It's just a section of road that's been overlooked in our inventory. We've taken care of it, it's bad, all that. It is Ne Smith Road. In the inventory, it appears it's one point zero nine two miles, and the actual correct length should be one point four seven zero eight.
We should have ripped off Case Chapel. Down one fifty there off Case Chapel.
There's intersects on the school road.
Yeah, one end comes out, the only road, and actually one end's a dead end. But yeah, it goes across the school also.
Yeah.
I don't know, you need to show them minutes, I don't, I don't need to make a motion or anything. But we've seen making corrections. Second. Bridge made a motion, Todd second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up, they're gonna close thirty-nine AM, and they're wanting us to okay the unofficial leader, so I need signatures proving this. It's the same as what they did last time, they're gonna cut through by the stockyards, and it goes from March first, April nineteenth, May fifteenth, is the closure.
March first, May fifteenth. Not that many more roads than through there. Was it a bridge replacement or?
Out of the way, pick over. I've not got the paperwork on it yet, but also they're gonna be closing one, it's gonna be in a different location. Do you have a time period on that stuff?
You don't worry.
One is right below Monter Hill, and the other one's right across the county line in the Forest Street over there, but I don't know what kind of detour we're gonna have to do to help them out through Forest Street. Not that far along, there's no good way.
There won't be a detour.
No, there's not a good way.
Singling dollars. Motion on that. Just spread it, can I say seven? Feel the first two more.
I'm sorry.
Can I say seven? Can I say seven?
Yeah.
Great. How on, I got a request, and I haven't had, I had to check the operating, I got a warrant writ, so there's gonna be a police community out there now, they're starting to bill and everything, and they were requesting signs, horse and buggy signs. You could look into that.
You don't worry about it.
Jeff Smith, right in that area.
All across the village.
Yeah, there, over that hill, Dick Mar, on the left.
We received five out of six trucks, the other truck's supposed to be here next week, so.
I wouldn't, can I ask you?
Yeah. Five out of six, anybody has it supposedly, another week, we'll have them all.
Are they out warranted yet?
No. And I think that's it for me.
Great.
Thanks.
That's it. Got it right? Rick? Kate?
I already went with the gentleman before.
Or you want to come home? You're okay with what we've done already?
Yeah, no, yep, I was just mainly contacting you for them.
Okay.
I'm not unlimited, that was out of my comfort zone, but I'm hoping for the follow-ups, and I'll continue to help them as much as I can.
We should know something this week.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Todd? Uh, yes. We have been discussing the last couple meetings, for those of you who are already in attendance, about making some changes or corrections, I should say, or more like corrections, to our county policy handbook in regards to vacation payouts. And what we're, what we would like to talk about today, which been talked yesterday in the council meeting. We've been paying out vacation to probably just about ten, fifteen percent of our county employees at the end of the year. Every county employee earns, in some cases, if they've been here more than five years, in a four-month period, they will receive five vacation days, for a total of twenty vacation days. So there are times in certain departments where I know it's difficult for employees to use all these vacations. So whether, whether it was intentional or not, some employees just didn't take them due to a heavy work schedule, so they were paid out at the end of the year. Well, that, that kind of puts us in a bind a little bit as far as, far as payouts, vacation time is already built into the budget. But we would like to eliminate that, that practice, and I'm not going to give you false hopes that it may cause some of you department heads some heartburn, it's going to cause you to maybe work a little bit harder on scheduling your employees for vacations, and we don't want to be here coming into the Christmas season, we don't want to be considered the three grinchers up here, but it is a problem, and it's something that we're not even sure if it's legal in the eyes of the state of Indiana to do these things. So we want to fix the problem, it's not spelled out real clearly in the handbook, but we want to, we want to do that, and we would like to eliminate that, and we would like to, in doing that, encourage employees to use vacation time for what it was originally designed for, and that is to rest, so you don't burn yourselves out. So this, this is not official by any means, this is trying to make the public and some of the employees aware of it, and a lot of the employees are already aware of it, so with that said, I would ask if there are any comments from council bowling, or? Mr. Shelly, new one?
Well, the, I have here the hand records for the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Yep.
And these are some things that they do not, they do not require. And that would be vacation, holiday severance, sick pay, meal or rest period, holidays on vacations, premium pay for weekend or holiday work, pay raises or fringe benefits, or discharge notice, reason for discharge, or immediate pay, final wages to terminated employees. So they don't require any of that, so it's left up to the council.
The reason for that statement is state history meeting, Fair Labor Standards, but I got a follow-up with that. The state does have requirements, which you all should have got a copy, I asked for, to be sent to you, and I've got it on my phone, and I think you probably have it.
Couldn't get it. I couldn't get it on mine, they wanted to open up.
Well, anyway, there are certain guidelines, you know, that's set up, but the long and the short, that comes back to, if it's defined in your handbook, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's it, you need to follow what you have, unless you amend and correct and change, but there is certain things that is governed by the state, and the state can go higher with their, their determinations about what you, then Fair Labor Standards Act, that's just the minimum, okay? And it doesn't, it was kind of halfway state history that it covered what I had press and read, but it don't cover. Now, this is just from the Department of Labor, I just drew off the pages, I didn't print out the whole thing, because, well, you know, and I both know, there's just a lot more to this than this simple state. Now, on the other hand, I think, just from my perspective, and of course, I'm not gonna be on the council next year, because I didn't run, and run, didn't run for health reasons, but beside the point, you all are gonna have a pretty good challenge, financially, coming up, in my opinion. I know economists, I know financial genius, I just know from past histories, and kind of what we're hearing, capital comments, I bought Larry a vote, but depending how the economy goes will depend on your revenues flow. Now, we spent a million and a half more than we were taking, in twenty-three, we're projected to spend a million and a half more than what we take in. That's an estimate based off the information provided, okay, from the state, on revenues and with anticipation, and I would support that, because inflation has impacted us all, okay? So as a council and as a commissioner, I think you all agree, that would be the right thing to do at this time, and see where we get to down the road, okay? Because we still, well, we work off that eighteen-month cycle, and we're still in halfway decent shape, but one downturn, that's not gonna be, we're not gonna get back versus what we pay out. So with that said, the decision basically boils down to the executive body, is what you do. Now, we are sophisticated, we have to find whatever you decide, you know, we need to do that, but I just want a lot of scrutiny, and I think you've already given a lot of scrutiny, but in all fairness, I just think the hard work of program, and this is just my opinion, and sometimes you can save a dollar and lose two, if you know what I'm saying. So in your decision-making, research what was sent to you, and we'll get some evidence you, not what was handed out, or sent out to everybody, but it's a tough call.
Appreciate the benefit.
But that said, I'm gonna fall for this thing. I appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate each and every one of you and what you do under the circumstance that you have to do it because it's not easy. And I don't think, uh, too many people understand how much time and bill mill liquidity goes into doing that job out there. So with that said, I've enjoyed my tenure working with you all and wish you the best down the road. And with that, I'll be with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Nice work both ways.
Yesterday was your last council meeting for, for you and John Reynolds. For those of you, naturally, a lot of you weren't here yesterday, but, uh, Ben has served, uh, and, well, he's, he's been a mentor to me and I appreciate him. Um, and this, that was his last meeting yesterday and, uh, I don't think he'll be a stranger. I'm sure he'll stop in once in a while.
Please don't ban her. I'll run this through.
And he was presented a plaque in the john and we appreciate your service. Thank you, Ben. That's all I have. Uh, that being said, we need to recess till
The next meeting starts in a while.
Yep. Yep, thank you. Okay?
Thank you, sir.